You want Joanna?
She loves.
Yes.
She truly is.
Yeah.
I'm happy to meet you.
In case you're enjoying the evening. And fun, and I feel like I've spent more time.
We spend a lot of time together.
We do. We definitely did, so I don't know.
Probably maybe we'll play her. I don't think it's.
Yeah. But in case you're. Also, I just wanted to say, thanks.
Like that.
Oh, there it is, okay. Oh, hi, it's on. Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight for this special night. I would call the Forstertown Council December 5th meeting to order. If everyone would please stand to pledge the flag. May I make sure you take your hats?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to have one moment of silence. I don't know how many know, but Jed Dixon passed away. He has been ill. I spoke to Helen, she gave me permission to have this moment of silence for him. He's been very active in the town doing things, the covered bridge twice. And Helen Hardy has been involved with the planning board for many years. So if we could have a moment of silence for Jed. Thank you. I do not see anyone signed in for public comment. So we have under announcements. If I could have South Forster Fire Department members, please come forward.
First, I want to thank the incoming council for allowing this council to present this plaque. You South Forster Fire Department was very gracious in donating the land to the town for the. In recognition that we have a fact to view what it looks like. And it's from the residents. It said, the residents of the town of Forster would like to extend their sincere gratitude to the South Forster Fire Department for the generous land donation towards what's a public safety complex. Your unwavering dedication to the safety, service, and future of our community is deeply appreciated. With gratitude.
Want to box, Jordy? Jordy? Yes.
Also, at this time, the incoming council has allowed some of the members of the outgoing council to make some statements. We will start with Mr. Peolino.
So perhaps if you wanted to say. On exit, and what I'd like to say is that you can be proud of being able to serve on the council. It was, it's been an experience, been a privilege. And like most, I think we'd admit that as I'm leaving, I wish I accomplished more. I always wished that I could have gotten more done. But it was a pleasure and an honor. It was great to serve with these folks. The town is full of wonderful volunteers. And without them, it would really, it wouldn't function. It wouldn't, it would not function at all, in my opinion. Every single person on every board and committee that I've worked with has been fantastic. And I like each and every one of them, they're hard workers. And I'd like to thank council president DeFranco. She's been an awesome leader, an awesome role model for us. And being in a large business, I've met very few women or men that are strong leaders and dedicated and loyal, hard worker. I just appreciate it every minute working, Denise. Thank you all.
Thank you, David. Cheryl?
I too want to reiterate what David said. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the people of the town, the Forster, as a council member. It has had its moments of ups and downs. We haven't always agreed, but we always came to work things out together. And I appreciate that. And I got that from Denise mostly. I want to thank Kelly and I want to thank Susan for all their hard work, their dedication. Without the two of them, this town would be in real trouble. I also want to thank George. I think he's done an excellent job. He's done a lot of stuff on Route 6. I know he's just getting started and I believe he'll do more if he's allowed to do so. And it would be foolish to let him go because there's nobody that can replace him. There's nobody qualified. But in general, it's been an honor and it's bittersweet. There's still things that I would like to have seen get accomplished and with, I have hopes, high hopes that they will. So again, thank you all.
Thank you, Cheryl. My turn. Thank you. The past 12 years have been wonderful. I was telling Susan today, I went onto Sugar Sync and I was denied access. And it hit me. Wait a minute, you're not doing this anymore after 12 years. My husband was figuring out tonight, two meetings a month, 12 months, 12 years. You were over 300 meetings. I'm like, yeah. It's been a big part of my life and I've enjoyed it all. I've enjoyed the screaming phone calls because people sometimes just want to scream and yell. And if you just listen, it resolves itself. The people that called, I got many calls this week, notes thanking me. And those were appreciated because I will tell those that are on the council know, those that are incoming, it's not always thank you for doing this. So there are too many people to thank. I don't want to name names because I'm afraid I'll miss somebody. I do want to say when I started, and this is more advice for the new council members, when I started 12 years ago, I was very naive. And I remember my second term, right here, we had a meet the candidate night. And I was sitting up there and we were asked questions. And at the end, we could say something. And I had said that I was a better candidate my second term than I was my first term. And some gentlemen in the audience said, oh, because you must be stupid. And I said, no, I was naive. I assumed everyone was doing things for the good of the town. And that's true for the most fact. But there's also hidden agendas. I was not aware of that. I didn't, I don't function that way. There are a lot of people who do functions with hidden agendas. So that would just be my concern. I also, at that second term, was the top vote getter. I wasn't allowed to be president because I didn't know how to run. And I was actually interviewed by the current president. And we. And we met down at Cindy's Diner and I was told how I was not qualified to be a council president. Well, for the past eight years I have. And I'm not going to pat myself on the shoulder, but I am going to pat myself. I think I've done a pretty good job. I try to be fair. I try to listen. That's the other thing. When I come into a council meeting, I'm thinking one way. And there's been many times where my vote has changed because I've listened to people and a different point of view. And sometimes it's like, oh, that makes sense now. Sometimes I stick with what my vote was when I walked in the door. So that's something I think. But I truly just want to thank everyone. I love this town. It's, it's the best. It really, really is the best. And it's because of people like you that come, support us, call us and tell us what your concerns are. Call us and tell us, thank you for what you've done. So I appreciate it. I leave with my head held high and I thank you all. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the minutes for November 14th. I'll accept the motion.
Accept the consent agenda is presented. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
All abstained. Denise, I wasn't here.
That's true. Thank you. Moving on to the seating of the new council. So at this time, if the new council members and elected officials, if you would stand up here. And I believe Mrs. Jessica De La Cruz is going to swear them in.
No, we leave. We are done.
David, let you off the leash.
Congratulations. All right, so I was given a script that's been used before to swear in council members. And so I'll start by saying, do you? And then you'll say your name, you'll say your name. And then you'll repeat, you won't repeat after me on this one. But once I say, so help you God, say, I do, like you did at the altar, I do. Okay? All right. So do you? Solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto the town of Forster and support the town charter. And that you will be true and faithful unto the state and support the laws and constitution thereof and the constitution of the United States. And that you will well and truly execute the position of town councilperson for which you have been elected or until another be engaged in your place or until you be legally discharged therefrom. So help you God. Okay, very, congratulations to the new council.
I guess we're gonna have to share. I think that one's on. Catherine, it looks like we have to share one. Swearing in, I mean, I'm sorry, approval of the warrant. I'll make a motion to approve warrant number eight and the amount of $221,044.20. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Election of town council officers. The first is election of the town council president.
Make the motion, we appoint Steve Plouffe, president of the council.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Steve Plouffe is town council president. So Steve?
Yep.
You can take over the agenda from here. Oh, you can't? This, this isn't loud enough? Or do I have to really be right in here? Okay, so in case you missed it, Steve Plouffe is town council president. You got that? Okay. All right, we'll, we'll try to, we'll try to get it loud now.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to. It's now too loud.
He's loud.
Town council vice president?
Heidi Rogers.
Second.
President of the council.
Second. We have a second. Any discussion?
Oh, you got it. Second.
No discussion? Heidi Rogers is the vice president of the town council. Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Heidi Rogers is now the town council vice president. And we move on to appointment of town officials.
I'll make a motion to appoint Joanna Achilles as town solicitor.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, probate court judge?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Nicole Carol Barnes as the probate court judge.
We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, I keep cutting you off.
I know, it's tough when we're sharing.
Now we'll move on to finance director, HR.
I will make a motion to reappoint Kelly Russ as finance director, human resources director with a three-year contract.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. DPW director?
Steve, I'll be recusing.
I make the motion to appoint Gordon Rogers, DPW director.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four. We did.
Did you say one?
Did you say three-year contract?
No. Then it has to be something else. I don't know.
We move your second on my last motion.
How do you do that?
Just say.
I removed my second in the last motion.
I remove my motion. I'll remake my motion to appoint Gordon Rogers, DPW director with a three-year contract.
Okay, we have a motion for DPW director Gordon Rogers with a three-year contract.
Second.
Second, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right. Tax collector? We have a letter from Catherine Hadfield. Looking for a motion?
I will make a motion to reappoint Kathy Hadfield as tax collector and administrative assistant.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Tax assessor?
We received a letter from Karen Williams requesting to be appointed as tax assessor. And so I will make a motion to reappoint Karen Williams as tax assessor.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Mr. Barrentine? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Director of social services?
I, I will make a motion to appoint Marissa Soto as director of social services. But I'd like to speak to this.
We have a second first.
Second.
Okay.
Second. All right, we have a second. Any discussion?
Okay, so I was fortunate to be on the interview team for director of social services. And this came at a time where we had a vacancy. We had Thanksgiving to deal with. We have Christmas coming up. There's really a lot of work that at this time of year. Denise DeFranco has stepped up. She's helped a lot. She's been doing Meals on Wheels. And she's been helping as much as she can. But Marissa is a breath of fresh air. She is very well qualified. I'd like to introduce her if she wants to come up so you can all meet her. She is. She, she has the qualifications. She has the energy. She's very organized. She believes in binders for everything. She, she's, she can go in and start on day one, which will be Monday. And she's going to take over. I, I have full faith in her, her personality, her organizational skills, her educational skills. She's going to be a great addition. And so I just wanted to add that just to a basic motion.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll be swearing this group of appointees and when we get to the end, so we'll.
Thank you, Amman.
Can't wait for you to start on Monday. Thanks.
Building and zoning official?
I have spoken to George. George submitted a letter, George Dumont. And he's requesting to be reappointed as building and zoning official. So I would make the emotion that I might, I think I can make this in three because there's two people under George. I would make a motion to reappoint George Dumont as the building and zoning official, Jeff Lowe as the plumbing inspector, and Michael Payalucci as the electrical inspector.
Second.
All right, there's motion on the floor for George Dumont, building and zoning, Jeff Lowe for plumbing, and Michael Payalucci for electrical inspector. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recreation director?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Tammy Steinkamp as recreation director. And after we have a second, I'll have some things to say about Tammy too.
Second.
We have a second? Discussion?
I would just say that Tammy is worth her weight in gold for this town. She has organized food truck events. She's organized, coming up actually tomorrow night, the Bright Night. She's done trunk or treat. She does the Easter, it used to be in the valley, now it's on the fairgrounds. But she has done an outstanding job as our recreation director.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? EMA director?
I'm, okay, I'll do the first part. I'm going to make a motion to reappoint Jamie Przynski as EMA director.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion?
Again, another outstanding volunteer. Well, she's with the department now that's paid, but she is outstanding in her job as EMA director.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Steve, I'll be recusing on the next one.
Okay, recuse. We have the assistant EMA director?
Make the motion that we appoint Gordon Rogers assistant EMA director.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to the appointment of deputies.
Deputies, we had.
Deputy town clerk.
Yes, we had received a recommendation from the town clerk to reappoint Michaela Johnson as deputy town clerk.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Deputy finance director?
We also received a letter from our finance director, Kelly Russ, recommending reappointment of Karen Williams as deputy finance director.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Steve, at this time, we have sworn in the council members. We have like non-standard employees later that most of them aren't here. I wanted to see if we could swear in the ones that we had just appointed.
Yeah, I'm saying probably.
Jessica? You're gonna have a bigger group this time, so all the people.
So everyone that was just voted in? Thank you.
I don't think Nicole Carol Barnes is not here, right? We'll get her later.
So just like the council, except we're gonna have our hand up. And I'll say, do you? And then you state your name. And then when I get to the portion that says execute the position of, you'll state your position. And then when I say, so help you God, you'll say, I do. All right? Okay, raise your right hand. Do you? Solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto the town of Forster and support the town charter. And that you will be true and faithful unto the state and support the laws and constitution thereof and the constitution of the United States. And that you will well and truly execute for the position which you stated that you have been appointed or until another be engaged in your place or until you be legally discharged therefrom. So help you God. All right, congratulations.
All right, we're gonna go down to the appointment of non-standard employees. Quarter of Wood?
Steve, I'd like to make a motion to move tree warden up to this. Steve, I'd like to make a motion to move tree warden up to this point in, um, in the agenda because the same person serves as quarter of wood and tree warden.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on moving it up? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, move that up.
I'll make a motion to appoint Robert Thurber as the quarter of wood and Robert Thurber as the tree warden.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Fence viewer?
Uh, we did not have a letter from Thomas DiAgostino, um, requesting to be reappointed as fence viewer. But I did call him this morning and he was interested in continuing as the fence viewer. So I would make a motion that Thomas DiAgostino be reappointed as fence.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Keeper of keys?
I'll make a motion. We don't have a letter, but again, this is someone that, um, I had spoken to and was interested in, uh, being appointed as keeper of the keys. So I will make a motion to appoint Bradford Smith as keeper of the keys.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Town historian?
We did have a letter from Stanley Hopkins requesting to be reappointed as town historian. And I will make a motion to reappoint Stanley Hopkins as town historian.
Second.
We have a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, constables?
Typically, uh, the constables, years ago, there, there were constables all over the place. We had random people being constables. But our recent past practice has been that the five council members, uh, serve as constables and the three fire chiefs. So I will make a motion that, uh, the following be appointed as constables. Stephen Pluff, Christopher Stone, Heidi Rogers, Catherine Bay, James Barrentine, Gordon Brayton, uh, William Paul and Paul Kniff.
Second.
We have a second for the constables. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. None of those have to be sworn in tonight.
I, um, I believe that they, that everybody is not here. They can, unless they, they want to be. A lot of times people just go see the town clerk at the town hall.
Okay.
Unless anybody wants to be sworn in. Gordon?
Gordon?
No, we're already sworn in.
Okay.
Anybody else? No.
Okay. All right, we'll go move on to new business. Um, town council meetings and dates. Uh, right now we have one set. It's already advertised. It's December 12th, 2024. Uh, the next one will be set for December 26th, 2024.
So I'll make a motion to dispose of the December 26th, 2024 council meeting as it falls the day after Christmas.
Second.
Uh, we have a second to remove, um, December 26th, 2024 council meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Under the same agenda item, Steve, the, on the third bullet. Um, we have, uh, scheduled repeating meeting dates, which, uh, the town clerk has to post. So our regular meeting dates will be, uh, the second and fourth Thursdays of every month. And then, of course, our financial town meeting has to be put in that calendar as well.
Second.
Are they, are those the only meetings we have to set? Uh, Sue? Just the town council and the financial? Okay, same, same time? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we'll move on to council liaisons, the town hall apart, uh, departments. DPW?
We, we had, uh, talked about some of this a long time ago. Um, I, we have them in bullets. I, I know Catherine, you had a preference. I think, I think we ju, we just need to get this before I can, I can make a motion to appoint all these people.
Social services?
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Catherine, Catherine, um, wants to be a liaison for social services. I, my preference, I have been liaison to finance for the past, uh, six years, so I would like to stay with finance.
I'll do the police department.
Uh, I'll take the planning, zoning and building.
I'll do the DPW.
Um, and so that leaves James, you just said yes, DPW. Okay, so now I can make that motion. Um, so I make a motion to appoint, uh, James Barretine as, uh, liaison to the Department of Public Works. Heidi Rodge? Uh, do you want to do them all at once?
Yeah, we're gonna do all of it. We're gonna pull it together.
Um, Heidi Rogers to finance and human resources. Steve Pluff to planning, zoning and building. Catherine Bay to social services and Chris Stone to police.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to board of canvassers. We have a resignation letter of Mary Jo Cretin?
Cretian.
Cretian, sorry.
I, uh, will make a motion to accept the resignation of Mary Jo Cretian with regret.
Second.
And I would like to read her letter if that's okay.
Yep.
Uh, dear Mrs. Stillen, it has been a pleasure to serve on the board of canvassers for the last few years. I am proud of the work that our team has done on behalf of the electoral process in Foster. The current board of canvassers members are dedicated to duties, laws and processes involved and have worked well together. However, I believe that it is in the best interest of the board to build capacity with new members between major elections, rather than to have changes occur at busier times in the election cycle. Therefore, as previously discussed, I wish to resign my position on the board as of November 30th, 2024. I will gladly assist with any training or other activities to support a smooth transition. Thank you. Thanks to you and other town employees for your support of the board of canvassers and the election process. Your efforts are appreciated. Respectfully, Mary Jo Cretian.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Ms. Cretian. Uh, we have an appointment of Judy Williams as full member for a term expiring in March of 2026.
I can do these separately, I guess.
Yeah.
Um, I make a motion to appoint Judy Williams as a full member of the board of canvassers for a term expiring in March of 2026.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we have an appointment for a new alternate for a one-year term, which I believe is Bart Hollingsworth.
Yes, I'll make a motion, uh, to appoint Bart Hollingsworth, uh, as an alternate for a one-year term, expiring in September of 2025.
Second.
And I just like, I'd like to say for under discussion that, um, he, she, he was recommended by the Democrat town.
Yes. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, moving on to the juvenile hearing board. We have reappointment of, uh, Thomas Duramo for a three-year term expiring in Sep, on September 2027.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Thomas Duramo for a three-year term expiring in September of 2027.
Second.
We have a
I'd like to.
Second, yeah, discussion?
Okay, sorry, I'm waiting. Stoning.
Uh, uh, J, Mr. Barrentine?
Sorry, I'm jumping the gun. You didn't say.
Discussion?
I just want to say that, um, I know Tom Duramo has served on this board for a number of years. And, uh, he, he's been an asset to the board, so I really support his reappointment.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next one is the reappointment of Mary Jo Cretian for a one-year term as an alternate expiring September 2025.
I'll make a motion to reappoint me, Mary Jo Cretian for a one-year term as an alternate on the juvenile hearing board, uh, for a term expiring in September of 2025.
Second.
Mr. Barrentine has a second? Any discussion?
Yes, another valuable member. Um, I support her reappointment.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, new business, moving on to item number five. Selection of a team to negotiate with the International Association of Firefighters Local 3422 for renewal of the dispatcher's contract.
As liaison, I would like to be on that.
Second.
Did you, did you want a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Um, yeah, I know you wanted a motion first. Um,
somebody else is gonna be on it too.
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to.
I, I haven't been on one in a bit, so I'll make a motion to serve on the negotiation team with the International Association of Firefighters Local 3422, uh, for renewal of the dispatcher's contract, myself and Chris Stone.
Second.
So second by Mr. Barrentine? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for volunteering. Like, uh, an emotion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Oh, um, uh, we didn't announce that there are refreshments in the back. We have coffee if Catherine gets it out there on the table.